Member.
Terry Wade, member.
Nate Tonight, member.
Bill Larson, ex officio.
Alan Whit, member.
John Racine, alternate.
Okay, Rich will seat you. Okay, review and acceptance of the July fourteenth meeting minutes. I had a couple of things.
I did, I did also, on page two, lines fifty-four to fifty-eight. I, I, I've read it several times, I have no idea what we're trying to say. So I can't even give you an author there and, and how to fix it. I, I can't remember that part of the conversation. I, I think what we were trying to say is they haven't run out of time regarding extensions, right?
This was with regard to move crossing.
Yeah.
Wait till the... I think, well, we had, we had provided or approved an extension until the July meeting. And that was-
Right.
At the point where we're pretty much, we're gonna have to make a decision. But then it was determined that it really could be extended further if we wanted to. And then the question became as to why the owner or the applicant wouldn't provide the two items that were requested. And then you had brought out that maybe the board wasn't specific enough with regard to the request for a bond and for a, a letter of inspection. Perhaps you were saying that maybe we'd had to determine that we were gonna require one or that we weren't requiring before we had read a letter for it.
Yeah.
So I think what was intent, what we did was we said, well, there's no urgency to make a decision. We had the extension of time and we needed maybe further time to consider the situation. I think that's what it was intended to say.
I, I, I think to clarify, we should strike line fifty-four and fifty-five. And just pick it up with Mr. Wade said they were running out of time as they have been granting the extensions when asked for. They have not said they weren't running out of time. At the May meeting, they did decide this would be the final extension. And just leave that paragraph as such. I'm not sure what the first two sentences are adding, other than to make the whole thing unreadable. Okay, so that's the change I would recommend, strike lines fifty-four, fifty-five.
I have no objection to that.
Also on line sixty-four, I think that should read, Mr. Larson said the board has not made a decision if they are going to require a bond or the inspections. And the strikeout, they are not specifying they have not made a decision. I, you know, that's kinda redundant.
Mr. Larson said they-
Said the board has not made a decision if they are going to require a bond or the inspections. Which is true, we haven't made a decision. And that's the reason why-
Right.
We're struggling with granting conditional approval.
I'm wondering also on line fifty-five, uh, and fif- fifty-six. Uh, line fifty-six and fifty-seven, if we shouldn't, uh, word, just find another word instead of they, so it would be more specific who the they is. Wait, uh, you know, Mr. Wade said they, who, who's that?
I was intending to mean the board.
Yeah.
Can we change that to the board?
I think it should just be more specific.
What line was I hearing?
Fifty-six.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Bill?
No, those are the two I had, I mean, the rest.
I just had, under, okay, line seventeen should be Ms. Raff, David, and Mr. Two forty-three. Mr. Wade asked Mark for a packet so they could review the information about Bill Campbell. Or Mark Decodo, if you don't mind. And two eighty-three. Mr. Wade said he has been approached by residents. Nah, not often.
I'm gonna make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, rather than, I, I would like to see these corrections made in the draft sent out again. Since this contains a lot of stuff relative to the interpretation of phase development in Green Peak, I'd just like to make sure one more time before we approve them, that we've got all of that right.
Okay. Mary, can you do that? You have any further time? Okay, we'll int- entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Well, I was suggesting we don't do that. We actually just publish them and then prove them at the next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right. Okay, we'll table the approval of the minutes till the next meeting. Okay, the first item on the agenda is new business, site plan consultation, Waterville Company, regarding the winter horse stable.
Morning.
Good morning. If you recall, last year I came to board asking to put a, I'm sorry, I didn't print out quite enough of these, so please share. For consultation on putting the horse stable into the old fairway so that we would be able to operate our horses, concessionaire program on the fair. During that consultation, I was determined that I needed to obtain a special use permit for the, for the horses to operate in town, which I worked with the ZBA last winter on. And we were doing that in what, in January? December, January? And then we all know what happened with winter, I got slightly busy and I wasn't able to move forward. So I come back to the board, the concessionaire does want to return this year to operate horse stables. He also has put on that he does want to have the horses in town. He feels that it's, and it's hard on the horses and all of the reasons that we discussed at the last meeting. So I've worked on the site plan, April, and I've worked on the site plan. And it's very difficult to make the site plan application work for this, for this, this minor. I would, I would hesitate in calling it a development, more of a temporary use. So I, I've put together just a very abbreviated site plan with a description behind it describing what we're doing. I've also brought my computer to show you what maps I've been working on. Obviously, I don't have a stand engineered plan for these tents, as we discussed at the last planning board meeting. I would need to show you what I was, I was putting together. And then we would determine if that was enough to apply for the site plan or if the board wanted to go any other direction. So if you wanna take a minute, see what I presented there, and I'll bring us a map.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask just a technical question?
You may.
I met, did we approve the site plan last year?
I don't believe there was an approval, if I remember correctly, it was sent to the ZBA.
So the board never, after the ZBA granted a conditional approval because they met the special terms of that particular, of the agricultural section, we never voted on whether to either accept the plan or approve the plan?
I don't believe they've been back since to the ZBA.
Oh, okay, okay.
I did not issue an actual site plan to the board after the ZBA. It was to, to receive the ability to have that activity performed on that land, in which we obtained that-
Right.
That permitting. But at that time, by the time we had gotten out, we had received quite a bit of rain and very little snow. And, and the ground was frozen, it was impossible to get tents in, it was impossible to get the, to see a successful operation for the year. So we, we bagged it and concentrated on our operation to make sure that we could get out in season with all of our hands and fingers attached.
And this package, it does include the ZBA approval of the conditions, is that right?
It does not, it does not. I would, I, I can put that in with the, with the official package when I actually apply.
I would suggest that probably.
No problem.
And did you say you had a plan or a sketch or a drawing or something?
Yeah, I have some, I have some, some mapping up here. And we're trying to get it up.
Okay.
This is a consultation, and I'm not gonna get too bogged down in details.
Right. But I'd like to see a plan.
Yeah, right.
So very simply, what we did for the ZBA, just to describe what it looked like there.
The red being the paddock, the green the stables.
Correct.
Is this just gonna be for the winter months, or are they gonna plan on doing it year round?
Only for the winter at this moment.
Just the winter?
Correct.
So you were right.
No luck?
Let's just wait and see.
Why has to be such a big deal?
Yes, it all depends on what the trampoline, I guess we have to just sort of see.
Yeah.
This is Black Bear. So this is the skateboard?
Yes. I think this is that little green behind, yeah, looking to you, couple.
Yeah.
I think it's that behind their house.
Okay.
That strip.
All right. Isn't that growing in pretty much now? That's all right. It's funny, you just, I don't ever really notice it, which is a good thing.
I know.
None, none of these buildings are permanent? They're all, and they're all to be removed at the end of the winter?
Excuse me?
The building, the, the tents are not permanent and they're to be removed at the end of the season?
Correct, by May first.
Do you wanna pass this around?
It started here that way.
I'll come over to you.
And there's a plan to monitor the horses during the evening hours, or?
Uh, the horses would not be, um, there would not be a person on site for that. The concessionaire lives just down the road. And he would be, he, he would have the horses locked in stable as, as he normally does. And he was pretty emphatic that if it needed, that he needed to stay on site, he'd stay on site. He'd make, you know, whatever we needed happen, happen. However, if we put too many stipulations on him, he probably will have to put the numbers together and see if it's worth his while any longer. He was very hesitant to come back this season after what happened last season, so.
The electric fence around the paddock, is that, if someone was to touch that, I mean, they're gonna get zapped pretty good?
Yeah, there's a, there is an electric charge there. And, and it's only operated during the time when the horses are outside of the stable, which is five hours a day during the work, during the weekdays, while they're being attended by their, by a staff member. Yes, there is an electric charge there, though. It's not anything that's fatal or anything of that sort, but it's, it'll give you a zap, it'll let you know it's there.
Is this gonna be in, set up such that people are gonna kind of flock to the paddock to kind of look at the horses?
I think they'll more flock to the edge of the parking lot, 'cause the parking lot, when, when we have the pictures brought up, I believe they'll flock to the edge of the parking lot, but I don't think they'll go down into the ditch and into the snow and into the, into the paddock itself. It's fairly removed from the parking lot, you have to go down the hill and into the, where the old green used to be to get that close. And there's trees all, all around it.
There'll be warning signs that it's like a defined fence or something.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how they do that, but I know that there's parameters and the best practices that he puts, puts warnings up.
That fence is on a pulse anyways, it's not a steady charge, right?
I, honestly, I don't know. I'd have to bring the concessionaire and ask-
I don't think it's changed, but-
Some technical questions.
Yeah, I don't think it's changed, but years ago I worked on a farm and it's, it's on a pulse. So bam, bam, not a steady.
Yeah.
So somebody grabs it, it's nothing.
So we're not gonna, do we have pictures or not?
Yeah, we, we- We're grabbing a stick, downloading it onto a stick and putting it up on his computer in here. Uh-oh.
What did you do? I just wanted to keep it on the screen.
Do you have the internet?
Yeah, but I guess I'll just do it here. Yes.
That's quite a drive. Yeah. That's how our daughter felt, she's been working in L.A. for seven years.
Yes, and she does, yes, my son.
And she said, I should have to get out of this place, coming into work every day. It's like being a social worker instead of a nurse.
Where is she now?
I really don't.
Oh, great.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, can I ask another question, uh, while you're waiting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering, is the town held harmless in this for any sort of injury to anybody that should inadvertently get in there and decide they wanna play with the horses? Or, or the horses if they got out? We had a sad situation where we once lived, where a woman was decapitated because a horse got out of a pasture and ran up the road in the dark, at a dark night, and she didn't see it. And, um, you know, things happen, and these are horses. Does the town somehow indemnify against any of these occurrences?
I know that the concessionaire, one of the meetings that we have with concessionaires, he's fully insured on his horses, he's fully insured on his, on his operations.
Well, as you know, I mean, people-
Obviously, he's fully insured on our operations also.
Well, you know, people are gonna sue everybody, though, so I, I'm just wondering if the concessionaire's insurance protects the town? I'd rather not.
There's nothing to protect here, you're, you're approving a site plan, just like any other site plan you would approve. You're not, the town doesn't get sued for approving a condo if the condo burns down. I mean, as far as the site plan is concerned.
Okay.
Public safety and all that other stuff is different, but you're, you're, the planning board's approval of a plan doesn't open the town up to particularly as suit, I don't think. I mean, I'll check with town council, but I don't see why this would be any different than any other, any other site plan that you would be approving. I might be wrong, but.
Well, it's on private land.
It's a business, just like any other business that you would approve for site plan.
Okay.
I, I will check with town council to see if there's a difference, but.
So every year, everything, your, the paddock and the stables get set up in what month would it be?
Uh, right around now, November.
November, and they're taken out in April?
I shouldn't say right around now, we're not in November. Yes, they get taken out before May first. Correct. And they, they're, they're moved. And when we see the pictures, you'll see, we use them to cover up our fanguns in the summertime. We use them to cover up one of the skateboard features in the train park. So we use them in other applications during the summer. They go, they come up and they go down in less than half a day.
My, what's the, it seems to be arranged with this, this question came up earlier. Whereas it's a temporary situation, does that call for a site plan review?
Um, I think we decided that it did, I think we just, we discussed that as part of the ZBA discussion.
So one of the conditions was that you get a site plan review?
Yeah, that's right. All they, all they dealt with was whether or not it was, it met the criteria for a special exception.
So that's the only reason why they need a review, is that correct? Because the ZBA said that that was part-
No, is it, in order to come before you with a site plan, they had to go to the ZBA to get the special exception.
Right, but if it's a temporary structure, normally they wouldn't have to come with a site plan review, is that correct?
If it was temporary, um-
With an approved use?
As an approved use.
Right.
I guess, yeah. They, but it's a commercial endeavor, so it's a site plan, it's under, it's a commercial use of land. So that, by the regulations, requires site plan review.
Development subtracts for non-residential uses. So development is the first question, would this be considered a development? Second question, is this a non-residential use, obviously it is.
If you don't wanna call it a development and it doesn't have to come before you, then.
Well, a similar situation arose with the Academy, where the trampolines were a temporary item, so they didn't require any review by number of credit.
You still, you still did site plan.
We did for the other permanent structures, but not for the temporary.
I thought we had talked about this once before, in that when, when, even if they are temporary buildings, if they go through multiple cycles, where, you know, every year they're coming back, like the skateboard park, they really should, we really should, you know, review it and just approve it. Rather than just letting it say, oh, it's temporary, it's being taken down at the end of the year. So to me, the, the concept, the concept was if there's, you know, if we do this, if you do it more than once, then at some point in time, we ought to review it. Now, I would also agree that the vast majority of information we're asking for here is irrelevant. But, um, and we could, we could just waive that. I mean, there's, there are no buildings, so there's no need to provide that. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't have, hold a public hearing and get comment and all that stuff.
It's true, although there isn't any permanent alteration of the, the land-
No, no, there isn't.
Or permanent improvement.
But there are safety issues, there could be fire issues, I mean, and from, there could be, you know, of, you know, we're supposed to be preserving the natural beauty of the valley and all of that stuff. There could be questions that could be raised relative to those issues. I think more than, you know, is it fifty feet back from the road? I mean, that's, that, to me, there's no need to do any of that. And I, and I gather the, the, the ZBA has ruled that they meet the, the farm animal requirement that's in the zoning law.
Right.
Yeah, so.
So as I see, the advantage to having the site plan review is that we do a thorough investigation of what we, what we're planning to do.
Right.
I see a disadvantage in the fact that then it becomes a permanent site plan. And then it can't be brought back into review. With a waiver, we could waive it, there could be an option, option to say in five years, we do a review.
Mm-hmm. It's broken.
Everything is connected and I just don't know. It's all connected.
So what is that, I mean, what do you do about that? We have to fix the battery and stuff.
Oh, wow. Okay. Now I have to learn how to use a map. Okay, so I just took this off of the, how do I expand this to video? You wanna try?
Don't lose it.
All right, just go, another picture forward. So that's just the town map, I just blew it up, I used it to, to show the lot that we're, we're trying to put this paddock on. Uh, no, just go, sure, we can start there. This is a map that shows the gradients, we can zoom in and really get a gradient line on that. And it shows that where the paddock is, is really a hole. There's, it's, it's where the green used to sit, and then there's a hole right there. So there's no, I don't see any worries of drainage issues or, or anything running out of that area. It's really sediment, settles right down there.
This is the area that you're gonna be in.
Correct, that's the area where the thing be in. All right. That's okay. This is the view from where the paddock would be sitting, as you can see where the wolf's bus is. There's a little swath right there that's almost graded correctly. We'd have to take those trees down, make a little landing for the truck to get in and out, to be able to bring the horses in and out.
That's the access that you're talking about?
Correct, that'd be the access. Correct, you can also see my truck in the background, you can see how there's bushes and things in between where the paddock and the stables would be from where the parking lot actually is. Um, if you look to the far left of that photo, you can see where there's a little ramp coming down, that's where the carriage would ride in and out to access for the, uh, the ride and the, the scenic, uh, it's ride around that pasture on the side.
Is that that little grassy road area that was cleared to take you directly out to, was it Valley Road out there? Takes you directly to the road?
There's, I found, there's about four different trails that are back there. One will take you straight to Valley Road, one takes you over by the golf course, one takes you out towards your property, and then one from your property kind of takes you around the back way towards, towards the Black Bear. And at least, it, it's really quite intimate and it's great.
And they all come together with this, this paddock?
They all come together where the paddock lies, correct. That's a view looking out, and you can see your property as viewed directly out from there.
Yeah.
Um, that's the, that's where you would see the view as you're riding down in the horse stable. You'd see their beautiful property and I'll see it all in the background and have, you know, that nice view as you're coming out on a, right?
Actually, the horses.
Yeah, the horses, the horses like that.
Yeah, it's gorgeous. Uh, tax map. So that just shows the whole tax map. Oh, it's upside down, just turn your head. You're not doing anything technical no more. But you can see where, where the C one is. Uh, it's a very large lot, it meets all the agricultural needs. We identified with the ZBA what, where the five acre area would be that's non-developed, that meets all the regulations for having the horses on that property. Right in there off of the, yep, it's actually over here, the little grid. Correct. So go ahead and go to the next slide, it'll show. Um, skip that one, that's one I just did. That's just a zoom in. That's just a zoom in. Yes, I, I have a picture. Oh, whoops, that's, go back again. Go down to this one. So then I did this on Google Earth, and it just drew it in, you know, kind of roughly and, uh, but showed where that paddock would be, that point seven acres paddock, which is the recommended amount for two horses being stabled and to reuse, dah 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 dah. And then where the stables would be, and I actually did this to scale on that map, so those lines are actually to scale. Um, go on to the next. Then I took the tax map, now overlaid the tax map onto the, onto Google Earth to match up all the relevant features, and that shows that we are on, on the parcel of land that is non-developed.
What was the red and blue line again?
The red and blue, the red is the, where the electric fence would be for the paddock, and the blue line is where the, uh, stables would be located, where the big, the, not big, the tent would be located, okay?
And how about the five acres for the?
Uh, five acres, if you wanna see that, I've got that, uh, paper, old fashioned. So this is the three that I did here, this is built into the non-developed parcels. This is the full parcel, this is where it would be put in the paddock.
What is the size of the non-developed parcel right now, Ray?
What's that?
What was the size of the non-developed parcel? Did he, did he list the size? It's over five, I know, but eighteen, it's eighteen, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, five point one seven.
Yeah, the total acreage, including all the parking lots, the actual is.
That's right there, eight point seven five acres.
Okay.
Eight, right.
Oh, eight point five two.
Eight point five two.
So there's.
Everything's eighteen point one, you can see it just a little bit much. Um, after you take out the parking lots and where, where green piggy developments at, and just using the trees and that pasture, I, I have it written on there, I believe it's five point seven, somewhere around there. Just trying to basically say the five acres is the area that would be agricultural.
The special exception, the ZBA settled on a particular five acres and made a delineated path on a map as part of their decision. So they, they permitted the, the, the special exception of five acres. It's probably not the right term.
And the horses would be, that, that, the horses would be riding in that area for the sleigh rides, but they really live in the stables, and they spend five hours a day on the paddock, walking around, get their exercise, they're pulling that sleigh around. So the big problem with having them go, going in and out of valleys is the fact that by the time they, uh, pull the sleigh around, they're very hot, they're sweaty, they have to be cooled down, otherwise it can be very harmful for the horses to be able to in and out of the valley, which creates a lot of time and effort on the concessionaire's part, uh, to cool them down, plus dragging them in and out of the valleys, as we all know, can be dangerous roadways wise, and we have to cancel a few weekends because of that, which in turn hurts his ability to operate his business successfully.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Just to avoid all the things that we had last year, um, I'm assuming that under no circumstances would the horses be exercised going down what used to be the fairway, up towards where we are, and that you're, you're not going very far down the fairway on their trail, so that it doesn't really get back into the same situation we had last year coming up towards green development, is that fair?
Yeah, uh, did, did we ever get this, I believe you wrote that.
Yeah, yeah, that was no problem.
That's as far as you would ever go.
No, I just want, I just wanna, you understand? I just, I just wanna short circuit.
You picked this rock pretty well, right there.
Yeah, yeah, that was no problem.
Okay.
Could you elaborate on what the situation was?
What happened last year is that the proposed route basically went all the way down the fairway,
Yeah.
up onto Deveraux Way, down Gro, Gro Way?
Yeah.
Gro Way and so on, so basically the horse trail, trail is a lot of work, but path,
Yeah.
route, uh, was basically going right up to where we are, up to our houses,
Mm-hmm.
and then out, and we kind of had a problem with that, so.
We thought it was a public road, we didn't realize.
Yeah, that's, that's okay, but, but then they, they fixed it, there's no problem.
Yeah, so that was, that was the issue that I, I wanna make sure we don't have again, just because we wanna make sure that, the stereotype is great for the valley, we just don't want it.
We just didn't want it around.
Oh, absolutely, and then I don't think anyone wants that, that in the neighborhood, and after we had our conversation, I went and walked the property and I, I found the, the.
Yeah, you found, you found the way around, you found the way around it out towards Black Bear and everything else, yeah.
Absolutely love that, so.
Yes, no problem.
Um, that brings up a, a good point though. Is there, um, and perhaps I missed it in your conversation between each other, is there private land that your trail goes on? Other than, other than that?
WCI, and there's private land, it's not public.
So there's a, but there's some sort of an agreement that's been reached with?
Yes.
Waterco Company?
Yes, I have a letter of that.
You probably, you know, that would be good if you could include the letter in the application.
Sure. So this picture here shows the gradients and just kind of gives you an idea of what the smart parcel of land is. Um, when you zoom in in that area, it's a little granulated in, in this particular photo, um, but you can see that it's really in that pocket, that proves that, you know, that we don't have water issues of, uh, uh, any sort of heavy rain or anything like that, that, that would cause any of the manure or anything like that to go down into a drainage dish that would be bad. Okay, I think we have, we have one of the shelter, I don't know if we've coded the shelter.
So you, you have, um,
Yes.
looked into this, everything drains eventually somewhere, and there is a brook that runs right down that road, uh.
It's on, yes.
And you've determined through?
You can see it on that, on that map that is lower, the, the drainage of where the green area would be, would, would be lower than where that.
Where does it eventually go though, does it head out in the other direction?
Sure, it seeps, it's gonna seep down through the ground, it's gonna seep down into the, into the existing watershed, eventually make it down into the, that river and, and.
It's not a wet area though, right?
No. No, there's good drainage water. Mind you, the manure and all that will be picked up, stored into a trailer, taken off-site for disposal.
Mark, I'm assuming that when the ZBA granted the special use permit, that they looked into all of that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because that's what it was all about, is making sure that the land is suitable, that he follows good manu, and good management practices for farm animals, and there is a whole list of stuff that you're supposed to meet.
So the true question that we land on today is, is this acceptable as a site plan, um, as described last year for our abbreviated site plan? Number one, number two, does this project meet the, the criteria of a site plan? Um, and number three, is it in the best interest of the town and of this board to actually approve a site plan so that it's permanently there, or would there be a waiver option that you would wanna, uh, discuss?
Okay, can we get the lights back on so we can?
I got it, George.
Thank you.
Sorry for the technical difficulties, and that's the shelter, that's a fairly standard shelter, it's gray and warm, most people don't even notice it's there. A lot of people commented last year the fact that we've had it all, up all summer long, and the state parks, no one noticed that it was over there.
So the horses are free inside that, that enclosure?
I'm not exactly sure how they, how they manage the horses inside the enclosure.
When you talk about the, um, manure's gonna be collected and put in a trailer or, and then that'll get disposed of, I'm sure, properly. I guess, how many days' worth of manure gets stored in the trailer and how long?
Yeah, once again, that'd have to be a concessionaire's question. Um, I know that he's, he handles this substance quite frequently, um, so I'm sure he has parameters that he follows. He also said he may just sell it as compost on the side of the road for us. Sure.
So we're not anticipating any storage container that's just gonna be, like,
No.
over in the area and that sort of?
And he's been, he's been the concessionaire for two years, many of, of the town, townspeople have gotten to know him. He's very, uh, sensitive to his operation, he wants to make sure that it's.
Subs mine, and that's why they came in for the approval of phase two. And now it's, wants to be changed because the sign doesn't work out, and that, you know, I don't have any problem reviewing the whole thing for that, to correct it.
Terry, I, I have no desire to go back and go through the whole thing over again. I think there's a real failure of communication between both of us relative to what is a phase subdivision? And is this a phase subdivision? This, the, the, the question of whether, if it is a phase subdivision, whether the selectmen are willing to interpret that as allowing a development sign to go up is a whole separate question.
It, it's actually.
And it's a small step in the right direction.
Is Bill like?
The big question in the long run, and you can send me a letter on it at some point, is saying, if I wanna go for, for, uh, for phase two, what is the process? That, that's, that's, and, and there's no hurry on deciding that. But if all of a sudden I had some, some, uh, pre-sales on that unit, then, and we wanna move forward and I come in, I'd like to know where I, where I am in the process.
Bill, is it fair to say that, I, I don't know, I, I haven't gone through this indeed, this is the only reference in the subdivision restaurant, uh, regulations to phased or partial subdivisions, is this one paragraph? I can't find any other, every other place they just use subdivision.
That's right.
Right?
This is the only.
Place where the word phase came up, part of our problem is this, we've never, I, I, I mean, we don't have a definition of what the heck a phase subdivision is, anyplace, what I mean.
Issues like Terry was looking through the draft, I, I agree with that.
Right, yeah, it's fairly clear. Yeah, because, because, no, if, if we just, if we said, you, if, if we said this, this phase subdivision was approved, I think reading the regulations, you can offer the lots for sale. It's fairly clear, that, that's fairly clear, that once the subdivision is approved, that, that's the word it uses, subdivision is approved, you can offer the lots for sale.
Well.
And that's.
Well, but this, I, this says that if the applicant intends to submit a final plat, that's the recorded document.
Right.
On only a portion of the total land to be subdivided.
Right.
Okay? The application shall cover the entire area of the tract.
Right.
Entire subdivision, and that's what was initially done.
Right.
Okay? And shall indicate the approximate outline and sequence of those portions of the tract for which subsequent final plats for recording will be submitted. So it, it's really a subdivision that only a piece of is being done right now. Only a piece is being done and recorded right now. By that, by that language, don't you think?
I think it's this piece.
That's, well, no, I, 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 no, I think this language is that whole rectangle, and the final plat has been done for the first.
I think that's the way it should have been done. I think that was the way the, I think that's what this intends to be.
That's what this language says.
That's what this language says.
But I, but I agree, I don't think that's what a planning board thought they were doing.
I don't think anybody thought, I don't think, I don't think we did that.
That's what I thought it was.
Well, then why did you come in with phase two application?
Because I, because I wanted to get final approval for phase two.
Well, I think it's because you believe the same thing we believe.
And in the middle of it, for some reason it was going on, we didn't need it, didn't want it, didn't wanna spend the money, we withdrew the application. That's immaterial to the discussion.
It's not immaterial to the whether or not you believe what we believed at the time, and the only reason the belief has changed now is because of the sign issue.
No, that, well, no, what, the, the issue's gotta get addressed anyway, if I'm gonna come back in at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
And, but I think what Mark has just said is exactly the case, and if you look at the stuff that was submitted, that's, that's exactly what was submitted, and that's why it was submitted. But if that's not the case, I just.
If, if that's what, if that is what you wanna consider the application for the subdivision, then I suppose the board could take that information and review it in, in terms of the entire piece, which is what you say was the intent at this point, your intent.
I believe so.
Your intent was to get the entire subdivision approved and then just bring a plat plan in for the first phase.
Final plat, pieces at a time.
And you're, you say that all the information that's necessary to get that entire subdivision approval has already been presented. I'm saying, well, that may be the case, but is, I think the planning board, from what I hear in the discussions and what I read in the notes, the planning board maybe misunderstood that and was thinking it perhaps was just for that first phase.
That's what we.
If we had the information, perhaps we could review that information as if it were an application for the entire subdivision, and consider that at that point, maybe provide an approval, and that would accomplish what you're trying to do. Would that be acceptable?
As long as we're communicating clearly, what you're saying is you're gonna go back and look at the stuff that was submitted.
I'm suggesting, I haven't had the board approval yet, but that's my suggestion.
Well, you suggest you go back and look at that and say, does this meet the requirements of completed application? And can the applicant come in with a final, uh, application for each subsequent final plat?
Yeah, no application involved, just a plat, right. Now, would you be willing, if during the review, the board came up with some requirements or some changes or some suggestions, would you be against addressing those in order to accomplish this?
I'm not anxious to, I, to spend, to put any more, uh, engineering or, or legal dollars into it. If it's my time to do it, I'd be happy to do it, but, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of money been invested there and it might all be for naught, we just don't know.
Do you still have the association with the engineer that did the?
Oh, absolutely.
So if saying, we wanted to get something, Mark, is in, in function as opposed to out of function, just so you would clarify?
Yes, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I won't spend a penny on saying I don't wanna go back in and.
That may be the resolution to this whole issue.
The, if, if you got, as I say, my interpretation would be, again, if you got the entire thing approved, the subdivision, in, in phases, right, subdivision to be executed in phases, you'd have a lot of, I, I'm just assuming, you know, first of all, I think under our definitions, you can then offer all those lots for sale, there's no restriction. Once the subdivision is approved, you can offer lots for sale, in other words, you can sign contracts, right? So there is a, there's, there's, you know, I, we, that, amendment, that argument we got into before and we changed it, we said, well, you can offer a thing. I, I'm assuming you could also come back in and amend the application at any point in time. I, I'm assuming you could also come back in and amend the application at any point in time, right?
Right.
Even though we approve it, you can always amend it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's the case.
Right, yeah, so why would you not try to, other than it's your time?
Well, I, I do wanna clarify for Bill the, the, um, taxation assessing ramifications.
Oh, they're.
Well, I, I. You know, I, I, I think we gotta talk to.
Oh, okay.
Because what's recorded versus what's approved, quote unquote. I just wanna clarify with the assessing agent what that means.
I still don't know what approved means.
Well, I, I.
And we may have a problem where the definition in here of phased subdivision is not.
Is not.
Terribly good to begin with, to begin with.
Right. Because it sounds to me like it's a subdivision, that there's no such thing as really a true phased subdivision. It's a approval of a subdivision that is then implemented in pieces.
Right.
What it may be is the, the completed application, which then has to be acted upon within a certain amount of time. But you basically have a completed application for the phased subdivision. So you don't have to go back and do the completed application submittal again. So what, maybe what you're really talking about is just an extension of the amount of time you have to do the, the final approval of the plat maps. I don't, I mean, just, that could be like ten years.
Does that screw you up? Now, in order to do a subdivision, it has to, what about ownership of that land? In other words, one of your problems is that you don't wanna go to the, um, the bank or wherever it is, or the association and say, I own this whole piece right now. We're gonna start developing this whole piece because that subjects the whole entire, piece to the association's bylaws. So when you, when you turn over phase one to the association, you, you're under the gun to finish the development for the rest of it. In order to do the subdivision, does it have to show that there's ownership of that whole parcel?
No, and that's what I would, that's the tax ramification that I'm talking about. I don't think it would because we've only recorded phase one. That's the only official.
Because that's the part, that's the part that went to the.
That's the part that got signed and was recorded at the registry. So if you do a title search, all you see is phase one right now.
All right.
So I don't think from a tax standpoint, there's gonna be an issue. Because there's nothing identifiable as the rest of. And maybe all we have to do on the remainder of the land is just put a note that there is a, a phased subdivision, uh, involved in that parcel, that, you know, that's.
For phase two, Bill, is there, are there any changes in, in, in what you've already presented to us? In getting that first approval, whatever, for whatever it was? What you intend to do now for state, for phase two, are there any changes from that?
I think the only changes that, that we see is, um, we'd like to, if, as long as it fits within all the subdivisions on the regulations, we'd like to keep the option available for the purchasers if they'd like a two-car garage or a one-car garage. And then we show that on the final plat and the fact that it meets all the setback requirements and, and so on. But other than that, I don't see any changes. If, if there's a greater change, you know, anything greater than that, you know, it needs to get revisited.
Well, there's a piece in that paragraph that says, the board reserves a right to require additional information or plans as it means necessary in.
Yeah.
So you can, you can do that.
Yeah, and that makes all the sense in the world, I, I think. I would agree with that.
All right, then I'm going to, uh, I don't know if we have to vote on this anymore. I guess probably not have to vote on it. We just put it on the agenda. As far as to.
So you're gonna review?
Yeah, I don't know if it's, I'm, I'm not sure if it's a, I don't wanna say reevaluate or reassess or anything like that because there's already been a, a, uh, approval of some type accomplished. I don't wanna interfere with that. So I, I don't know, I'm, I guess what I'm basically saying is that I'm willing to take the information already provided as an application for a subdivision for the entire parcel, without have, asking for an additional application or anything like that. Or do you think it's best to revisit the original one?
I don't know, whatever you, whatever you wanna do. Do you wanna review the status of the Green Pea Phase subdivision?
How do you, I don't think, I don't know if you can take a decision from a previous board and redo it, can you?
Well, I, the decision by the previous board was the approval of phase one. That's the language of the motion that Bill made.
And I don't think that we should go back and change that, but I, I think we can take what information is available and has already been presented. Look at it as an application for the, the entire subdivision. For the, for a phased subdivision, which indicates that the approval will be for the whole, entire area.
Subdivision approval.
Subdivision approval of the entire.
Right, but as, as we've talked about, and, and once he gets that, I, he at any point in time, if he decides to change his mind, can come back in and amend that application anyway.
Yes.
Right.
And the board, Bill, the planning board can ask him for additional information.
Absolutely.
Comes in for any other final plat.
And we would consider the information that's already been presented as the application for a site plan as well. And take it as two.
Well, town council did say you need two separate actions, but you can use the same information.
Right.
Just two separate votes. That's all it takes.
I don't want to throw monkey work at, at the last minute, but I'm reading the subdivision regulations. And under section C, final action, it says, except for minor subdivision, boundary agreements and lot line adjustments for which expedited review is allowed, the board shall require submission of a final plat prior to final consideration.
Right.
Well, how, if we don't get a plat, how, you know, what we're doing is violating our own rule here.
Well, no, because in F.
That's what gets recorded.
Yeah.
Well, that's not what this says. This is, says that the final plat is supposed to be submitted to us before we give you approval.
Yeah, but then.
I think final action is only on the part that's gonna get recorded.
Oh, that could be. It, it's silent on that.
My, my kind of interpretation is everything else is action on the, on the completed application, not on the final.
It does not say that the final plat must be submitted, that I see. It just says that you are to provide one.
But it does say in, in paragraph F, that for a phased or a partial subdivision, if the applicant intends to submit a final plat plan on only the portion of total land to be subdivided.
Yeah, it's in contradicting that, the, the statement I just read. Yeah.
So I think, I would say that F sits on top of C and that it says if, it's only gonna be, if you only intend to submit a, a portion of that subdivision as a plat plan, that it can be done. I don't see it as a stumbling block. I see it as awkward. It's awkward and a little conflicting.
Yeah.
Terry, if you'd like me to go through that completed application submittal with you, I, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I'd see a need, but you know, let me, let me review what we have, Bill.
Okay.
And then if, if I've got some questions or something like that.
What I submit, I, I put together a package and I actually write the requirement that's in your regulation. And then I write the answer to it. And then the next thing that's required for that, and I write the answer to it. And I, I do that so that there's never any question about what we have, we've addressed, not your checklist, but every requirement that's in.
Yeah, I don't deny that. I think you're doing an excellent job on the, the applications and it, there's, there's no problem there. It's, uh, just a matter of interpretation, I guess, in this particular one, but.
I appreciate you doing that. I, I have to leave at eleven. And I'm sorry to take up everybody's time with this over and over again, but if it improves communication going forward, I think it's all.
What I, what I would do, Bill, will let you know when it's gonna be on the agenda. It might very possibly be next month. I would like you to be here so that you could answer questions if we had them.
Okay.
As if it was.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Sorry to heat up everybody's room. At least it's cooling here today. Go outside. I think we're gonna need something different.
Shocked.
Thank you.
Okay. Wendy's not here from the town core group. I don't know if anybody has any thing for that. Any communications, Mary?
No.
Nothing. All right, it's been a long meeting, so I guess unless somebody put anything they wanna bring up. I'll let them, I'll let them information to a jury. Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?